All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March nineteenth at three fifty-eight. We are going to start our work session today. Present in the boardroom are members Holman, Lessons and Jacobs. Member Higgins just walked in. I see President Bellamy online. And we will announce other members as they arrive. Our selves to order. First item of business is RFIs. Then we have our current request for information log present. Is there any board member who wishes to add an item to our RFI list?
Sometime if we could get some data on how frequently we've had to pay for class coverage this year. For board members that may or may not know if if a teacher has to leave suddenly. Someone has to cover the class and the district is a stipend for that. And the most frequent thing is when a substitute teacher doesn't show up or the job's never filled. But I'd just like to get some idea of how often that's happening. Some point down the road. And if it can be broken out by building, that would be an interesting statistic.
Can we first get clarification? I mean, this administration need clarification and then we can ask if there's a second board member who would like that.
And does our HR team and finance copy the request? Is that feasible? Great.
Is there a second? Okay, I see member Lessons. Great. We'll add that to the list. Any other RFIs to add to our log before member Lessons?
Thank you. I have two, so I'll try to be succinct. I've been thinking a lot about waitlists recently. And the topic came up again in a community council meeting I was at last night. So I'd like to be able to understand sort of the scale of waitlists at in ASD. And I don't really know how to phrase this correctly because I'm aware that, you know, one family might apply to five different schools. Which is not an accurate representation necessarily of the actual number of families on waitlists in ASD. So I think I'm interested in the overall number of students on on sort of the aggregate waitlist. And then maybe if there are schools, individual schools with with particular waitlists. Of note, I think that would just be helpful for public, be able to talk to the public. And the second one is a reflection of a conversation I just had today. I was down at South High School Judging for History Day Project, which was fantastic. But I learned that AP Government and AP Econ classes maybe getting cut next year as a result of, I guess I'm assuming that's an enrollment based metric. So maybe is that correct? And do we know what classes maybe are being cut next year and could be at risk of getting cut? Should the PTR plus one? If that makes sense?
But does administration want to tackle the second item? Sounds like maybe we can make clarity here before we add to the log.
Would you like to?
So that's the first I've heard about AP Econ and AP American Government. I, that's not something that's come across my desk. And that if it's being cut itself, it's because of numbers probably. As far as.
I guess the short, the short version is what classes there already are being cut?
So now, now that we've already moved forward and not doing that, it literally.
Two sets of reductions that either will or will not happen, right? We know that enrollment based metrics, we're losing thirty-six teachers or so in second year. Or grades four through twelve, just enrollment decline. That's going to translate to some number of courses that are just not offered. But then there's also the PTR plus one, which the board has saved off. And I just wonder if the classes have been identified. You know, are they at risk?
There were, so there's two answers to that.
Okay.
The first one, as far as like the PTR plus one, that one, each individual high school would have decided and every middle school would have decided what each of those things are. We have not compiled that in any way. That would take us a little bit, but we if they still have it, because I'm sure they've already changed and adjusted and have gone back and they're determining and getting ready to run loaders and stuff without that plus one. I mean, I know that if we have to do it later in the budget process, we'll have to, but I don't know if they prob, I don't know if they've kept that. As far as the, the number of courses being reduced because of the the number of enrollment, that also is almost impossible to connect at high school because of the fact that every year we're constantly changing some of the courses that teachers teach. And this year we had, we're adding that ninth grade academy course. Career course. So literally, there's a lot of changes. To be able to say this is because of enrollment drops would probably almost be impossible to do.
Okay, but maybe if I could just clarify my question, because I do think it's helpful to continue to be able to give legislators and the public information about really what's at risk. Funding doesn't appear by the end of, you know, mid-May. I would appreciate understanding being at some point.
We can, we can gather that as best as we possibly can.
Classes that are likely to be cut.
Yeah, we can, we can gather that.
Okay, I'll happily second both those requests I had on my list.
Mr. Chair.
I understand the the topic of waitlist, so we'll add those two items. Then President Bellamy, your hand is up.
Yeah, my, my, thank you, Mr. Chair. My, 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 I have a couple of comments, actually. I think the waitlist question, I needed more clarity on the waitlist question. Is that for all of our optional alternative and charter programs or just charters? And and I guess I'm just trying to understand that's going to take some work, at least from my perspective. And I'm trying to, is there a way to narrow the request or do you want any waitlist in the dis, any program that a kid is waiting on? You're looking for that information?
We have so many schools of choice and families may choose to, you know, lottery into a particular program because it's more convenient than their work schedule or because they want their child to have access to immersion or to that particular, you know, optional ABC, whatever. But there are, you know, I reflect back on preschool conversations that I had and families would talk about applying to five or six schools. And just throw the spaghetti on the wall. So I'm interested in understanding maybe how many students are on a waitlist somewhere in ASD? You know, is it?
Okay.
Hundred kids, five thousand kids? And then, you know, I have heard state leaders speak about thousands of students on charter school students waitlist. And I just don't know if that's a true statement.
Yeah.
So understanding what the scale of our waitlist looks like seems like a useful piece of information.
Oh, okay. So and I guess that makes sense. Although parents can always call to see what that list looks like, because it is that that list will change almost daily. So I guess if you're looking at a point in time. Yeah, but that the list, the list will, because as people leave, other people take their places and anyway, I just see it as a revolving door. So there's never going to be a set of good data.
Yeah, I don't know what the best point in time is to ask for, you know, whether that's at this moment or the start of the school year.
So we'll just leave it up to the superintendent. Okay. And then my second question just had to do with, actually, I think, I think Finn answered my second question. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm good.
Thank you. Any comments from administration before we move on?
Yes, may I request Mr. Gustafson speak to the waitlist question?
So what I would recommend is after the waitlist has, after the lottery has run and after parents have had their time to accept their positions, once that has completed, we can have good data after that, as clean a data as we can, because there are, like you said, some families go for many, many different lotteries, but that would probably be the cleanest data because like President Bellamy said, as you go past that, it takes a while because it it literally that system generates new emails to new families. If one family declines and it, there's a really, it takes, it's constantly moving. But we could, after that spring lottery, we'll find a way to be able to give you some data from a specific point and we would mark it at that specific point. Because if there's thousands of people waiting for a specific school that would show up. But if there's only fifty, that would also show that there isn't that many on that waitlist. Does that make sense? Would that work?
A clarification question on that point. When does that, so when will we have that data after the spring?
Eric Vissey is in charge of our lottery stuff. He would have the best. And I don't know that off the top of my head.
Do we now? There you go. So the lottery waitlist will have the current seats. The seats will go out. And schools will confirm their seats. Parents will get notified here the next week or so. They'll be accepting seats based on the number of students they will have. And so we can get you a moment in time snapshot then. We can also get you a moment and snapshot for when spring enrollment happens, which will really truly be when the waitlist happens, right? Because they'll be accepting the seats at that point in time. So the two different data points of what's the total volume? Or how many kids are totally coming into the program as far as all of our lottery based or application based programs? And then how many do we have on a waitlist after the moment? Two data points. Price or budget will be important, but I'm getting blasphemous. The dates would be after enrollment, which will be basically when first students show up in August. And then we can get you it based off the total number of applicants from the first window. We're working on the final dates for our summer lottery, which typically runs in the middle of July. And that usually fills up the waitlist. Or for some of the schools that have lower lottery based applicant fills in those seats from what the seats are available based off of PTR and ratios that they're adding.
But we should be able to, that after the spring one, we should be able to tell you how many that waitlist will grow after the July one.
It's, thank you. Member Holman, any questions on?
I'm wondering if you're able to look backwards and tell us what the status of waitlists were at enrollment this past fall. And I know it's done electronically and may be able to grab that. I'm just thinking that that probably what would be most useful is a list of of every school that has a waitlist. I think it's been lost in the recent discussion, but a lot of our neighborhood schools have waitlists too. Not just charters and not just optional programs. But then also a tally of unique families. So that if, say, someone does sign up for four or five different schools, they're not represented in an aggregate number, but we know how many families just want some sort of alternative program.
Mike, do you know if that data is going to be accessible?
Yeah, I think we can get that as well. Both unique student and then by school.
Even like from this last year too.
Yeah, I think we can get, get all of that information, some variant of it. Thank you, Member Holman. Thank you, Member Lessons. I'm still will add that item to the log. Any other members who wish to add an RFI to the log before we move on to our agenda? Hearing saying none. The one is complete. We'll move on to C one, CCL update. Dr. Bryant and team.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So today's work session will focus on the Academies of Anchorage Initiative. We're very excited to brief the board on our progress to date and major milestones that are on the horizon for the school board. I also want to note that our CCL team has done fantastic work at engaging our community on the power of work-based learning and ASD's potential to be a major player in workforce development for the state. We're really proud of all the work that they've done. So I'll hand it off to the great team.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bryant. I'm happy to be here. I have a whole team of folks here that are involved in this work very directly that are going to help me present some updates today. So I'd just like to introduce the team really quickly. On the end here, we have Devin Roberts, who's our Assistant Director of Career and Technical Education. We have Eric Backman, our Senior Director of High Schools. You all know Sven as the Chief Academic Officer. We have Cindy Shapu, who's our Director of College Career and Life Readiness. And we all have portions of the update today that we're excited to share. So just to ground us a little bit in what we'll talk about today, I I know that the screen is is catching up, so hopefully you have the printed copy in front of you that you can refer to and I'll just kind of move us along. So we'd like to just update you on some general updates and highlights. At the beginning, we really want to talk about the extensive work that our tactic teams are doing right now. There are twelve operating tactic teams that are doing a lot of work. We want to talk about our steering committee work. I know that there were some specific board inquiries that we would like to talk about and then just preview some upcoming steps and milestones that are that are in the future. So with that, the, if you go to the next slide in your packet, if you're following along with paper, this is just a reminder of where we are in the the implementation and and planning and development of the work. And so, sorry, they're working on the tech for screens. So if it's the roadmap, and so I just wanted to remind everyone where we're at in the the development and implementation of the academies of Anchorage. So we have made it through our first steps in the twenty-three or twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And this school year is really about envisioning and planning with the first implementation going on in the fall of twenty-four next year with our freshman academy and our incoming freshman core class. And then in the fall of twenty-five is when we will then elevate those career academies into implementation as those students move up to be sophomores. So just to kind of ground us in the work and where we're at in the process. So the next slide, I wanted to update. All right. Well, that was a little exciting. All right. So back on track, this particular slide is our major partnerships that have been established. You know about many of these already. But I wanted to just highlight that the municipality of Anchorage has really come forward to be a great partner for us. They have actually committed to sponsoring our freshman career expo next year and are really involved in the steering committee work as well. And so I, we have added them to our our list of major partners in the academy's work. And I wanted to highlight that as a great partnership along with our others that have already been established. So I wanted to highlight our last community convening in February. We met on the sixth of February at the Egan Center for a morning. This community convening was slightly different than our previous ones. The two previous ones were really about getting the word out and educating our community and getting them on board with this new mission around academies and and the transition. Our February sixth convening was really about the tactic teams that have formed and getting getting the work done with our community partners. And so it was slightly smaller. It was held at the Egan Center and those tactic teams met in groups. And during that time, they were able to essentially have a work session and get feedback from other tactic teams to improve their plans and keep the work moving forward. So we'll talk in depth about those tactic teams a little bit later in the presentation, so that you can see all the different groups of work that are going on actively right now. The other thing that we did is we unveiled our new Academies of Anchorage logo and some videos that we'll see later as well that are educating our our parents and our students and broader community around the work that's taking place and coming. So at the February sixth convening, where the screen's catching up here, we did approve a community Y statement. And so that was really a big part of a collective understanding of why we are making the change, not only as a district, but as a broader Anchorage community to this career academy model. And this statement that you see on the screen is the kind of finally, final approved community Y statement moving forward as a part of the work. We also were able to finalize our portrait of a graduate. And so you'll see this document that I know the board has really been interested in and contributing to and had a lot of great conversation around. So you'll see this for final adoption by the board in in the coming weeks. But our our community convening group that has really been actively working on this has approved this version for you to take a look at. You'll notice that the format is a little different than the first draft that you have seen. The language has been cleaned up and over one thousand people both internally to ASD and externally to ASD have reviewed and contributed to this document. And that's a, that's a huge community effort. And I think we should just be really proud of it as as an Anchorage community. So I wanted to highlight that as a, just a really great collective coming together of lots of different inputs about what we want for our kids in the Anchorage community. So moving along, I wanted to really dive into all of the active work groups, which we are calling tactic teams as a part of the academy's work. And I'm going to turn it over to Cindy Shapu and she'll lead us through the work that's happening there.
Good day, President Bellamy and school board members. Thanks for having us. I'd like to talk briefly about our tactic teams. We will look at three in particular. But overall, the tactic team structure really is about looking at the community connected approach. And so each of these tactic teams takes on a specific responsibility of our master plan and are developing a three-year action plan so that future members can implement what the vision that that these particular tactic teams had envisioned. So looking at the action planning process and our timeline. In January, most of these tactic teams began. Tactic teams include a co-chair member from our community as well as from ASD. We have begun the process of creating those action plans. And in April and May, we will be taking those action plans and bringing them forward to our steering committee for approval. And then after they have been approved through our steering committee, we will be developing our master plan and then bringing it forward to you in management. I wanted to speak briefly about one of our tactic teams. The freshman academy, as the freshman academy is happening next year. So there is a lot of information that we had to compile quickly this year. In that tactic team, we outlined the recommendations and requirements for each of our age comprehensive schools. Some of the staffing requirements that the recommendations moving forward is to have an assistant principal as well as a counselor assigned to freshman academy. And that guaranteed experiences of a career expo as well as a visit to our local universities and the first day of school being a freshman orientation day. So those are some guaranteed experiences that are outlined in the implementation plan. We're hopeful that in the academy, that teachers will be placed in academic teams. In those academic teams will include a CTE teacher or the academy career themed teacher, as well as the the teacher that is associated with freshman seminar that we are calling the Career Exploration Class. We are also looking at making sure that each of our freshman tack third teams are supported by PL and special education staff. One of the biggest pieces for freshman academy that will be starting here this spring is professional development. So we we providing professional development in the freshman career exploration class as well as some teaming. I'd like to share with you the freshman academy video that has been put together with our communications team along with.
All right. So since we've relogged in, the audio is not playing. So maybe can Steve help us out with the audio on? If we can't get it, we can come back to it. Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll move on and then we can kind of come back to that.
Can we jump in really quick? Well, we have a question and then for the record, I wanted to note that Member Donley joined us at four oh five. And Member Wilson is here now, fourth one three. Member Lessons, you have a question?
Can you help me understand, is freshman academy a simple course or is it a concept or many things?
So, good question. So it it's a concept for many things. There is a course that is a part of it. So I'll go back to this slide. So the course that we would consider as a part of the freshman academy that is different than what freshmen are taking this year is called Freshman Academy Career Exploration. And we've, it's, it's not a great acronym, but FACE is the acronym for short, just so we don't have to say that big title. So essentially, the concept of freshman academy is that it's a smaller learning community within the larger high school. And so you have teacher teams made up of your four core subjects plus that freshman academy career exploration teacher. But then you also have a dedicated freshman academy counselor. So the only students that are on their caseload are freshmen. And and their sole purpose is to help freshmen with that transition year. Then you also have an assistant principal assigned at our Big Eight high schools that is dedicated to freshman academy as well. So it's essentially a smaller learning community design with teams. Much like you would see at a middle school setting with teams in that that setting. The the entire idea is that you surround students in a hard transition year to high school to support their academic and social needs as they they transition into the larger high school.
Call number lessons.
So I'm thinking a lot about how this translates for students who are knowing that early on they're applying to colleges. So if I'm submitting my, if I'm a freshman and I, you know, move through this and I submit my diploma to schools X, Y, and Z, I mean, FACE or freshman academy career exploration is on my transcript and I get a grade A, B, C, whatever, for that class.
Yes, you do.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's see if the audio works. We wanted to share the freshman academy video with you. This is a video that we've been working on. It's also something we've been sharing at our eighth grade parent nights as students are learning about freshman academy and moving to high school next year. So no, it's still not working. So we'll, we'll just move on. We we can send it to you so you can watch it on your own. So I'm going to turn it over to Sven to talk about career focused academics and his tactic team.
So I have a, my tactic team is career focused academics. And what our goal is is to be able to recommend to the steering committee what the actual academies and pathways at each of the comprehensive high schools will be starting in two years. In in this process, we've, we've been having, it it's gone like two different pathways. Our, our tactic team has been working on a lot about workforce data and kind of what the numbers need to be and how many different pathways for the each of the different industries that we would have to have. And then at the same time, the schools have been working on what they think would be good pathways and academies at their, at their schools. Well, what they did was they actually provided us with their recommendations or what they thought would be a good piece. And then we took that information along with students and parent survey data and workforce. And then we took that information along with students and parent survey data and workforce development data. And my team, my tactic team, um, tomorrow will finish up our work. Or not finished, we'll hit a next milestone where we will come up with what we believe should be the academies and pathways. And we will present those back to the high schools tomorrow evening on individual meetings. And then they'll have a, a week or so to, or actually a couple of weeks, I think, to, to go back and look and see why this would not be doable or why this could be doable if there's a different recommendation than they had had. So the timeline, we started this in January, every, every, we met every week. Looking at all of our data and gathering data and having presentations. On the 29th of February, the schools presented to us their, their ideas. Tomorrow, we will be presenting back to the schools in individual meetings. Then on the eighth is when the final recommendations go to the steering committee. And then that will then, once the steering committee accepts those, they'll go on to the cabinet and, uh, school board. Um, and then in May first is our big, uh, PR event that where we actually announce what each of the different academies and pathways at every school will be starting for the 2425 school year. So that's kind of the planning with this tactic team. And we kind of, this is the one where we need to get these sets so we can now start and get moving and the planning and building for that 2425 school year.
So, um, looking at our communications tactic team, that's been a, a large focus for us as a college career life ready team. In the academies of Anchorage work, we've been working with MJ's team. We've also been, um, working with some outside companies. Thompson and Company is a, um, media, uh, company. And we've also been working with Landsick Media to really focus on getting our message out around the transformation. They've helped us not only with website development, but, um, we've been doing some external media to, to really publicize what we're doing. They've helped develop the videos that I was hoping to show you. Um, and hopefully we'll get to see another one here in a little bit. But this has been a, a huge, um, part of the work is through the transformation, being really transparent with our, our students, our parents, our teachers around the communication of the transition. Um, and so that's, this, this team is actively working and very busy with that work. So looking ahead, um, one of the big projects was developing a new logo for our academies of Anchorage. So, um, this is something that you've seen before, but, um, just wanted to highlight the great work that, um, Pam and the communications department did, um, working with our team to develop this. So just to describe this logo a little bit, we wanted something that was, um, representative of Anchorage in Alaska. So you, and something that was somewhat consistent with our current logo. So you see the mountains that, um, kind of mirror our ASD logo. The, the swoosh, um, the multi-colored swoosh that you see is representative of the Northern Lights and other Alaska, um, kind of theme. But what is also unique about that is that at least one color from each of our high schools is represented there. And so there was a, a big kind of mission around unity and bringing together the high schools, um, within this logo. So additionally to this logo, we will have an individual academies logo for each of our large high schools. So for example, if you were at Bartlett High School, you would have your own logo with the, um, swoosh and the A and the mountains. But it would say, um, academies of Bartlett and it would be in a Bartlett blue color. Diamond would be in diamond maroon. Um, and so each of our schools will have their own unique logo as well, um, to represent their academies work and to use in their publications. So, so this is our new logo, um, as we move forward with the work. This is another video that was created. We're going to try it one more time. And if it doesn't work, then we'll send these in work next so you can watch them on your own. But, um, this is an overall video of, um, the, kind of the vision of academies moving forward that we will be using more readily, um, in the public and in our communications. So let's see if the sound will work this round. All right. Well, I had great intentions. It was all working before the meeting. So, but we'll include these, um, in, in on the radar or not in on the radar in, um, the, the board connect, um, this week so that you can watch them on your own. So the first video I was trying to show was specifically around freshman academy. And this one is about the academies of Anchorage. They're really great. They feature our own kids, um, working in our schools and, and interviews with some of them. So, um, they're really, it's a great, um, product for us to use. So looking ahead at the next one, I wanted to shift our focus to steering committee. And, um, so like in the structure of things, we have the tactic teams that are doing like that really detailed work. And the steering committee is the group that is really more high level. There are large business partners or industry partners. Um, and they are, um, kind of steering the ship for us and they're kind of the last step before things come to you as a school board. Um, and so I wanted to just update you on where our steering committee is at. So, um, we've been working hard to, um, have the right people at the table representing industry. So we are fully seated at this point. We have 20 voting members representing, um, a variety of different, um, partners and industries within our community. We paid a specific attention to having great representation from many different industries so that we have a great conversation at that high level. So we have 17 of those partners that are voting members. And then we have three ASD folks that are voting members and the three ASD folks are myself, Dr. Bryant and Sven. Um, and then we also have, um, 12 supporting members who are non-voting. And those are folks that, um, work either on the CCL team. Zora Wilson comes and she has a final vote as a board member. So she's there just as a support for, for the conversation, just as an example. But we also have folks from United Way, our community convening partner as well. Um, and so this is the body that will really review that, the, all of those tactic plans that eventually get created into that one master plan that will come to you as a board to adopt, um, before the end of the year as a kind of our, our main mission moving forward with the academies, um, and how we're going to get that work done. So, um, we have approved bylaws as of our last steering committee meeting so that we're really, um, you know, walking on the rocks and, and officially kind of operating as a fully functioning steering committee. We have shared a rubric for how we're going to evaluate those tactic plans that come to the committee. Um, and then at our very next meeting, which is next week on March 29th, we will begin to hear presentations from some of our tactic team groups. And we will continue to do that in April and May prior to bringing the master plan to you. Um, and so that group is, um, really a dynamic, high-level group. And, um, what I've been super impressed with, um, from, from my lens is just how dedicated some of our community folks are to this work at the steering committee level. And so that really is a positive for us in this work moving ahead. So switching gears again, I wanted to get to some specific questions that have come up at the board level, um, and, and talk about those things. But probably the one that's really on a lot of people's mind is what does the schedule look like? And so I'm going to turn that over to Eric Bachman so that he, um, can walk us through that process.
Thanks, Dr. Johnson. I appreciate it. Uh, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. So as the slide indicates, there's no bell schedule change slated for the coming school year. However, we wanted to use tonight to introduce the idea of a bell schedule change, circulate the idea. A brief summary of some of the rationale behind it. So currently, as you're aware, um, our high school is based on a six-period schedule. Giving students 24 classes over the course of their four-year tenure in high school. As we're aware, we have a two to 300 students who continue until the fifth year, and I'm going to come back to that as part of the rationale. All the districts that we're looking at who represent the best CCL work really in the country have moved to a eight-class schedule. Most of them have adopted what we refer to as four by four, four classes a day rotating sort of the schedule. Giving students 32 classes over the course of four years. So increased academic opportunities for our students. And really important to emphasize that the change, the proposed change, uh, would support all students for a variety of reasons. On the high academic end, this would give opportunities for students to increase course opportunities at the college level, AP, IB. As we're promoting pathway and CTE instruction, this is going to give students the opportunity to really dig in to more opportunities in CTE hands-on trades oriented classes. For students who are struggling for a whole host of reasons that we're all aware of, this would provide students more time and more opportunities to get academic support. They may be a second language learner, they may be supported by special education services, what have you. It would also allow for more flexibility in the schedule to allow our students, uh, who are career oriented to have opportunities for job internships and job shadowing. Our teachers, uh, with a four-by-four schedule would likely have a planning period and also a collaboration period. Dr. Johnson spoke earlier about, um, the organization of freshman academy, which is going to have four academic teachers working together, supporting smaller cohorts of students. If you can picture a freshman class of four to 500 students broken into three groups, each of them supported by a team of four academic teachers and their career exploration teacher. Those teachers would have the opportunity to collaborate together, um, creating a network of support, academic, social and emotional, again, to support that rough transition year that might create a doubt and clear evidence in our district shows. In terms of the school board's commitment to increasing graduation rate, there are few structural adjustments I can think of that have the potential impact that this does, creating more opportunities for our students, uh, to earn the credits they need for graduation. I would remind members of the board that currently we have a, a graduation rate of eighty-one or eighty-two percent, plus or minus. When you look at the fifth year, it jumps to eighty-eight, eighty-nine percent. Which is really a tribute to our teachers and our students who show commitment and resilience and a clear indication that they want to graduate if given the opportunity. They take full advantage of it. Moving the schedule to, to offer more classes, I think, would allow students the opportunities to earn those credits and graduate in a shorter period of time. It does invite the question of, uh, the graduation requirements, of course. And preliminary conversations, you know, we would, we would encourage conversation around increasing graduation requirements to include, uh, probably two years of a career pathway. Supporting the academies of Anchorage initiative. Uh, and also to include a year-long freshman academy career exploration class, which we're forcing to do this in 2025. And we're just beginning to circulate this idea, um, but wanted to share with, share it with you, um, tonight so that we have ample time to talk about it as it is a significant structural issue.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Another, uh, topic that has come up as a board inquiry is, uh, King Tech High School. What happens with King Tech in this model of academies of Anchorage? So I wanted to assure the board that our vision around academies, um, would, would continue to have, um, King Tech thrive and, um, provide lots of different options for students. We, we believe in that program and we don't believe that this academies model changes, um, a whole lot, um, with the, the operation of King Tech. What happens inside the walls may have impacts and I'll talk about that here in a second. So what I wanted to just say, um, about next school year is that King Tech will operate much the same as it always has in the next school year. We're not changing schedules, um, and our academies, um, will not be active quite yet. So students will continue to, to operate and attend King Tech much as they have this year and next year. Um, the two things that are impacting, um, the future of King Tech, um, through this model are one, a schedule change that we just talked about that, that would have impacts at King Tech and how students attend. For example, if we do end up in that A, B schedule model, it would mean that students would probably attend King Tech for a full day and then have a day that they are attending a full day at their home high school. And then they would go back for that third day to King Tech as opposed to the half-day model that you see now. So that's one potential, um, change. The other, um, thing is, uh, that will impact is what academies are named at our local high schools. And, and that has some domino effects at, at King Tech. So in order to effectively work through that and still have a really robust King Tech offering, we will stand up a tactic team just around King Tech in the fall. So this May, we will name the academies. We will be able to see which programs will be at the local high school that potentially are offered at King Tech right now. And that instead of an, that offering at King Tech, um, maybe that program is placed at the home high school now. And we need what we would call a capstone program for students to move to. So as they top out at their home high school and need a higher skill in a particular area, they could potentially go to King Tech for that. There are lots of advantages to that with their relationship with AMCS, um, and UAA. Um, and then the Career and Technical College, um, at UAA as well. So it would allow students to learn the basics at their home high school and then go to King Tech for a higher level experience. That's one option, um, that we could see at King Tech. The other option is that there are facilities that we will not be able to have in our home high schools, right away through the academies model. So I'm thinking in particular about like the welding shop at King Tech. We're not going to be able to build one of those over the summer. And so when we talk about welding, there may be some introduction courses that are a part of an academy at the home high school. But because of facilities, then students would need to, um, opt into King Tech if that's really where they wanted to, to be in terms of an industry. The other, um, the other thing that's in consideration for King Tech is that, um, while we're doing the academies model at our big eight high schools, we have a lot of alternative programs that are going to, um, start to adjust to that academies model, but they won't be able to offer the full spectrum of academies that a large comprehensive high school will have. So in order to have equity of CTE offerings for our high school students across the board, whether they're at Polaris, whether they're at Stellar, they're at Save or Benny Benson, or if they're at their comprehensive high school, we want to make sure that students always have access to a CTE offering that's really robust. And so that, that, that again is a reason why we continue to see King Tech as a viable, strong option for students to attend. And so we will work through that transition with King Tech in the next school year and how the planning that we're doing now in the large eight high schools, um, will impact those programs at King Tech. But there is a flow to that. We can't put the cart in front of the horse, if that makes sense. Um, and so we need to have those named academies so that we can then see what that impact will be at King Tech and do the robust planning that we need to do. So that is, um, where we're at with King Tech High School. Um, and the other, the other part about it is we want to look at ways that we can increase the enrollment at King Tech too, because they're, they're under enrolled at this point and we want to see that enrollment increase. So that'll be part of the plan as well. Um, oops, going the wrong way. So the last thing I wanted to talk about as a board inquiry is there, um, there's been a lot of discussion about, are we tracking students? That's one kind of conversation I've heard. And then there's another conversation about will students have all of those advanced placement or, um, IB opportunities? Those high-level opportunities? And, and I need to, um, just talk a little bit about project-based learning to explain that well. So when we look at the academies of Anchorage, um, as a, as an approach to instruction in our high schools, it's really based in project-based learning, um, which is a pedagogy approach, um, where students actively engage in real world and projects or, or problem solving. So rather than, um, necessarily like a sit and get and a textbook paper kind of situation, they have a problem to solve or there's a hand-on activity and they learn the concepts through doing or through project-based learning. Um, and so this concept of project-based learning is central to the academies of Anchorage approach that we're moving to. It's also been very prevalent in some of the curriculum adoptions that the board has seen, um, for the high school level. So when you look at springboard as an English curriculum and you look at illustrative math as a math curriculum to recently approved curriculums, this is also a base. It's very well researched and vetted. Um, and it shows better academic achievement for students in the long run. The other thing that is very viable about the approach of project-based learning and, and promising is that it allows students of all different learning levels to access the concepts and be involved in. is that it allows students of all different learning levels to access the concepts and be involved in the course. So whether you have academic challenges, or you are high-level learning, or anything in between, this is an approach that all students can access in the way that they're receiving their instruction. So I wanted to back up and talk about that as an approach because it's important to how we're thinking about these courses and how students will select it. And I wanted to turn this over to Cindy and Devin to explain a little bit more about the flexibility, project-based learning, and how we do course selections within an academy works when we get into launching our career academies. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. So in terms of, we wanted to provide you some concrete sorts of scenarios. These are somewhat hypothetical. We haven't had academies named pathways yet, although we have some CTE programs, for instance, in health science. So we created a couple of scenarios in order to highlight the possibilities of all of the choices that students have, including the fact that they have sort of different on-ramps and different off-ramps, including pathways that lead directly to careers, pathways that lead to two- or four-year post-secondary training opportunities, apprenticeships, and so on. So if we can go to the next slide. So I know it's busy. If you take a look at the first path up, so this is a, I should frame this a little bit. So in this scenario, it's a health science, a student that's very interested in health sciences. So they're in a health science pathway. And it's their ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade schedule, basically. And if you take a look at the top row, that's the CTE strand. Under that is the English, algebra, or excuse me, math, science, and then social studies. So there are many opportunities, especially if we went to an A period day with an AP schedule for students to take global electives, world language, music, get the support classes that my colleagues have talked about. So there's all of those opportunities, and those are not reflected in the graphic. I just want to make sure. But if you go back up to that top strand, you can see a freshman would start in freshman academy career exploration and really get an in-depth look at different careers. And in this case, the student says chooses, okay, I want to go into health science. So one of the options, if you follow that track across the top of the graphic, is they could choose an introduction to health sciences course, or they might jump into a principles of biomedical science course. In this case, the student's chosen to find out more about health sciences and to start picking up some of the technical language skills and knowledge relating to health sciences. And then you can see they then progress in their eleventh grade year to principles of biomedical science. And in this particular scenario, the student has chosen that they want to enter into a path. Path is a pre-apprenticeship for health sciences, and it prepares them with some specific certifications like CPR, first aid, NATS, relational training, some others. And then when they exit twelfth grade, they can actually enter into the health sciences field as a career. Meanwhile, they're taking some of their other academic courses. Cindy, are you going to talk a little bit about those?
Yep. Very typical with the career explor-, or career classes. There are many opportunities for students to take a wide array of core classes within their teams. So in this particular scenario, the student is choosing English as a freshman, following with English II, English III, or English IV. But at any point, if that student would like to choose to take an AP or an IB course, that would be something that would be available for them. When we look at science in particular, in the health science pathway, there are many opportunities for a student to explore areas of interest, whether that be in an IB school or in an AP school. There are many different opportunities for students to gain experience in a microbiology class, or marine biology, or a chemistry class that all also pertains to the career field. So below the scenarios of the particular career-themed course, you can see the different opportunities kids may have. Lots of scenarios. Do you know?
Yes, scenario B. So scenario B, we have again a health sciences scenario, and it's very similar in terms of what the choices are. But this particular scenario, the student has made some different choices than the student in scenario A. So in the CTE strands, of course, they're taking freshman academy career inspiration. It's a fourth course for all students to do that exploration awareness and learn about the pathways that are both at their home high school as well as regional high schools. But in this case, the students decided to go into principles of biomedical science, then onto human body systems, and then medical interventions. These courses are more representative of a path where they're headed to a four-year degree program or possibly onto medical school. So in this case, you can see in some of the the courses generally are more, many of these courses in particular are courses that fall under the umbrella of what's called project lead-the-way courses. Just as we've talked about, all these courses are hands-on. They're project-based, and in that case, this is what the students looked at, but are chosen. But I think Cindy's going to talk a little bit more about the academic content choices.
Many of the courses that you see here are what we would consider college prep courses throughout a student's schedule in the eleventh and twelfth grade. In addition to these five courses that you see in each grade level, in a larger schedule, students would also have opportunity for fine arts, opportunities for their PPE class, opportunities for world language. So and also additional CTE courses across different pathways. So a larger schedule also provides opportunities for kids to and students to expand beyond their career-themed course, but also make sure they're well-rounded students.
Yeah. And before we move to next scenario, I just wanted to point out to the board that we listed AP here, but if you were at West High School, many of the options that you would see under AP would actually be your IB courses. So those would be interchangeable depending on the school setting that you're in. So we have a second scenario we wanted to show around STEM. So you could just see a different lens from a different academy in terms of scheduling and what that would look like.
We have two questions. I saw, we'll go to member Higgins first, since we're breaking for questions, and we'll go to member lessons.
My interest is in changing of the schedules so that you can accommodate any credits during that period of time. I recall about, well, close to ten years ago, when there was discussion about eliminating the middle school and going from the six-to-seven class schedule. And when I did the review of that in regards to it, it said it can be very successful, but only if you get the buy-in first. And that we had a tremendous outpouring against it. That's where greater lesser schools came from, and BSA, and tying it together financially. And within that, so I look at this and I listen to how we might go to have more credits. I think about the size of the students that one teacher is carrying during the workload and how that will change and what the impact it will have, and having some sort of communications in regards to impacting on staffing, getting support, and buying in. Everything has positives and negatives. I'm listening to a lot of positives right now, but I know there are always risk factors and negatives, and I haven't heard that, which is, I haven't heard the downside. These are things we have to face. These are the issues. So I'm looking at this and I'm saying, what's the impact to the individual teacher? How are we going to be able to address that issue if that's out there? And how are we rolling this out in a way that's going to be so we gain the support needed to make it successful? Because otherwise, if you go down the same tubes as the six-to-seven classes in a six-hour day, you got major obstructions, they say it's not going to be successful. And I don't know if this is in the same category or not, but that's what my concern is. What's going to happen to the number of students that's going to be in the caseload for teachers? You've got the same number of teachers. You go from, you know, six to eight, or you make that kind of change. It's going to be a big caseload of impacted students, I mean, to the teachers, it seems like. Is that accurate?
So this is the first time we've talked about this right here. We are going to get out and have a group of principals and teachers come together. Mr. Bachman will be leading that work. Yes, they'll have some more students, but yes, we are also looking at some more planning time in order to be able to balance that out. With a four-by-four, you try to look at teaching three of four each day. There, and if you were to look at minutes, it wouldn't be that much different. We are looking at a transformation that's going to be helping kids though, and when we were looking at that specific middle school thing happening, that was a budget cut. This is literally looking at what's best for kids and actually building this from academies of Anchorage. This is, you know, we have tactic teams, we have a whole group planning this whole thing. This is a transformation, and yes, there will be some effect for every single person in a school setting, from the principals to the teachers, to the aides, to the kids. Everybody will be having some kind of change. As far as buy-in goes, you know, we've had AEA go on three different trips. Tori Ace has gone on, I think, yeah, three trips to be able to see exactly what this is looking like in each of those different school districts. And so we're, you know, we're including that AEA leadership in this work so that we can hear those concerns from their lens.
And the CCL team has also met with the AEA executive board to talk about academies work. We've really tried to, in particular, work very hand-in-hand with our teachers' union to really educate about the model, but also to be really transparent about what those changes are going to be and the effects. And so I think we're still right kind of at the beginning around the scheduling conversation. That's the work that Mr. Bachman is going to do with that committee that's going to begin forming in April so that we have really great, honest conversations about how we can make this work for everyone despite the challenges.
Remember, just to follow up real quickly on that, there are other options out there, I know, and you probably looked at multiple options. Is there something out there from an academic review kind of standpoint reading that we can get to kind of say this is the benefits and the likes of? Just, I'm curious about it.
Yeah. I'm going to be in a purchase of a minute. Remember, Higgins, we have another question. We have two minutes left. So I'm going to have staff follow up with you directly on that. Member lessons, your question, please.
Can I move to extend the work session by ten or fifteen minutes?
We have someone who's part of our work session, but if, yeah, if we want to, is there a consensus around extending ten minutes? Sounds good. So we'll go to member lessons, and we'll come back to member Higgins' question.
Thanks. So maybe a quick point of clarification, and then I just wanted to, I mean, I will send a bunch of questions that I've been noodling on, because that's a better use of time. I thought I had read that ancient civilizations is going away and will be replaced by the freshman academy career exploration. But I see them both on here, so maybe you could speak to that. And then I guess the second question that's unrelated, but certainly on my mind, in a four-by-four schedule, there's less, I'm thinking about the content of a US history class, because I see that at the beginning. There's a lot of content in an AP class and that's structured, and there is less time in a semester or a year in a four-by-four schedule to move through that material. So can you talk me through that?
Yeah, sure. So to address your first question, so ancient civilization isn't necessarily going away. For one year only next year as a transition year, we are replacing ancient civilization, which is considered an elective. It's not a required course in our graduation requirements. But what we do require is a social studies elective. So when students graduate their ancient civilization semester that they typically spend in their freshman year counts as their social studies elective for graduation requirements. So we've replaced that for one year only next year because we are continuing with the sixth period day with the freshman academy career exploration course with the intent that we spend a year being able to evaluate our schedule and then transition that freshman academy career exploration course to a year-long course in the fall of 2025. We would then bring back ancient civilization to our social studies sequence for students in the fall of 2025. So for next year's freshmen, what the impact is, is that they essentially will need to find a semester social studies elective at some point during their sophomore, junior, and senior year, which is very doable in the system that is upcoming. And there are lots of choices that students could choose in terms of coursework and how they would want to address that at semester credit. So we'll work through that with this particular freshman class coming forward. So to address your second question, member lessons. So yes, there are AP courses, like the one that you mentioned, that have an extensive amount of coverage that they have to, or material that they have to cover. So part of the work next year, if we are looking at a potential schedule change and change in instructional minutes, is looking at our spoken sequences so that we can adjust and still meet the requirements of those AP courses in particular. So that's the work that teaching and learning will do under this new approach in the next year so that we set our teachers up for success. We also have an extensive amount of PD that we're getting, we're going to provide to our teachers, one of which is a lot of professional development around teaching on a block schedule. And there are specific teaching strategies where you can go deeper and further in a block schedule when you have that ninety kind of-ish minute block versus having a sixty-minute singleton course or class period. And so we'll be doing a lot of that work. And then the second point, or maybe third point, that I would just offer is that when you're teaming with teachers in the team model that we're proposing through freshman academy and then career academies in tenth through twelfth grade, you're covering a lot of skills holistically as a team instead of as one individual teacher. So like, I'll just use a concept like note-taking. If that's a strategy that you really need in multiple courses on your team in your career academy, you don't need to learn it five different times from five different teachers. And that's a lot of the instructional minutes that we can absorb back if we're teaming so that it can be spent on learning the content. So that's part of, I guess, the benefits of working as a team of teachers versus individuals in five or six different classrooms.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I think it's a great question for member lessons. I would encourage you to consider that there is a quantity of time, there's also the quality of the time. And what a four-by-four schedule does is it slows down the length of day to four classes. The classes are longer, which allows teachers to go in further, deeper. We talked earlier about project-based learning, which in its ideal state is interdisciplinary. So students are getting their social studies curriculum, the example you brought up, in their social studies class for longer, hopefully deeper lessons. But they may also be echoed in their English class, right? So it's quite likely that the quality of the education will be resolved well, but the quantity of it in terms of minutes.
Member lessons, member Higgins, did you have a quick follow-up before we finish up our presentation?
So just for time's sake, I'm going to skip through our second scheduling scenario. It's much the same of what we discussed in our health sciences pathway, but has a STEM lens. So if a student was in a different field of study, it would show you the options and the flexibility in scheduling. Just to round out our presentation today, and thank you for the extra time to continue, I just wanted to highlight for the board some really important events and milestones that are coming up. So our last community convening of the year will be on April 22nd. We will have a morning event. It will be very similar to our February meeting where we have our tactic teams gathered all together to essentially have a work session. And so the goal of that day is to really combine the more completed tactic plans and be able to look at what gaps exist in those tactic plans that need to be filled in and maybe where there's redundancies, so we don't have two groups of people working really hard on the same work, and that way we're more efficient. And so that is our last time to really evaluate and work through all of that before that master plan is given to the steering committee for some final approval. So that'll be our last large convening to do the work this year. On May 1st, we are in the process of planning a really large public event. You'll all be VIP invitees to announce our academies. We've secured Bartlett as the location and backdrop for our announcement. And so more information to come on that, but we plan to really make it a celebration, have our community partners there. We would love for you to be there as well. We're even ordering some vests for everybody with the academies logo so we can really celebrate the work and the milestone that we have. Over the summer, I just wanted to preview that we will be doing a lot of planning for the launch of freshman academy. So there will be some professional development ongoing this spring and in the fall, and then lots of individual planning at schools. And then lots of of individual planning at schools. We will also start to stand up our industry councils. So once those academies are named, so for example, if we have a construction academy, then we will stand up an industry council around construction trades. So we have the people who are really in that industry advising us as we build those pathways for schools in in the year to come. And and then obviously, we will launch in August with our freshman academy. And then just looking ahead to next year, one of the larger things that that happens as a Ford Next Generation Learning School District is what they call Ford NGL designation. It means that we've officially kind of reached a milestone with Ford NGL to be designated a Ford NGL district. And and so we'll have some more of an information about that coming up in September. So that's a look ahead for what those those milestones are. So with that, we are done for the day. I appreciate the extra time. And if you have individual questions, my team is happy to sit and talk about those.
Member lessons, a question before we wrap up.
So the academy, and I don't know if it's an Akron or Nashville, but it stands out because it's got Goodyear's name on it. Everybody knows Goodyear because the tires and everything's. Akron, thank you. Okay, so Goodyear is sponsoring the Something Academy of Akron, presumably paying money in that partnership. Does ASD have a similar partnership? So that's where like local businesses are funding the pathways?
So not yet, although businesses are starting to offer that up. And so that's really a just a decision point that we need to make as a district. Do we want named academies is what what I would call them? So do we want a sponsored academy? Like, do we want the Health Academy of such and such hospital? Or do we want names attached to academies from companies? And so districts that do do that, they do have a monetary agreement typically. But what they mostly, what what is more of the agreement is what they call time and talent. I think I've said that to, talked about that to the board, where they dedicate a certain amount of hours to individual schools to sponsor the those academies. So it it's like upwards of over a thousand hours a year that professionals are working with schools directly and students. And so that's something that I foresee us approaching as a strategy through this work as a district in the next year as we start to build those academies. Businesses are already interested in that as a as a real possibility. And so I, we'll have to talk about the details about that and how it's structured.
Thank you. That's a good way to end today. Thank you so much to the administration for the presentation. With that said, I would entertain the motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal contracts. And regular updates, what's the third, contracts, legal updates, yes.
Legal updates.
All right, made by President Bellamy, second by member Holman. Any objection? Thank you. We're adjourned to executive session.